Okay, um, we are recording. Great. It is ten oh two. Good morning. It's January ninth, twenty twenty four. And we are here for our first annual meeting, or our first meeting, uh, of the board in twenty twenty four. Um, today, we bumped our regularly scheduled, uh, on the second to today. And so, um, this will be our first meeting of the year to take care of, um, the budget as well as our annual resolution. Can I ask everybody to please silence your phones and join me in Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have an approval of the agenda? I do not think that we have any other changes for the agenda. Is that correct? Tim, Commissioner?
Yeah, good for me. Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda today.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Um, community informational items. Commissioner Feathery?
Uh, none for me.
Commissioner Marcella?
None for me. Thank you.
And, uh, I'll keep it simple and I don't have anything here. Um, all right. Any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Please state your name.
Yep.
Thanks.
Justin Curtis, the Congresswoman in Brittany Patterson's office for the seventh congressional district. Uh, just wanted to share a very brief update that Congresswoman is working toward, you know, bipartisan solutions to prevent a government shutdown through the, at least the partial shutdown that would be looming upon the nineteenth. And then the remainder of those, of course, are very second. She's, um, working diligently with folks on both sides to, to prevent that. There's, of course, a, a reserved sense of relief that there is, uh, a, a very, very initial deal struck between the Senate Majority Leader and the House Speaker on a framework for the, the, uh, the budget. There's a lot more detail to be fleshed out in the actual appropriations of those matters. So, um, most of that, uh, most of that work is still left to be done. But this, there was a significant hurdle to overcome and look forward to kind of working off that momentum. That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Justin?
Good luck.
Yeah. Uh, any other public comments? I don't see.
Tim, there might be one on the.
Okay, any public comments online from our folks joining us virtually? It looks like we have one more person, so I'll call it again. Any, any public comments online for us before we go into our items of business? All right. It doesn't look like anyone online wishes to give public comment. And we'll move on to our new items of business. First item on the agenda, we have the discussion and consideration of a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated to upgrade our hardware and software in the Lake County Communications Center. And we have Sheriff Speckman and Office of Emergency Management Director Claire Skiing here to chat with us about that. We have had a work session on this, so, um, is there any, any new information to share or just give us a brief synopsis?
Yeah, we, um, were able to extend the discount period, which we were kind of rushed to try to accomplish this prior to that ending. And they extended that out to the twenty sixth of January. Um, so the contract is under legal review right now. We've had, uh, our county attorney already reviewed and sent that information back to them. Their legal team's reviewing the contract as we speak. And, um, our, the contact person there can push that through if we need to get that done a little sooner. But we have until at least the twenty sixth for that discount that we're pursuing. Um, so that's the main update and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you still want us to pending legal review, just to get that?
That would be my request.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything back from Motorola's folks yet. But I'm hopeful that there will be substantive changes.
And if there are, Lane said that he can connect Jim some sort of conference call with their team to, to work through whatever the main differences are.
Okay. I don't have any other questions for you from our last conversation?
I don't either.
Okay. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the contract of Motorola Solutions for the upgrade of our hardware and software in the communications center pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Claire.
All right. Item two, discussion and consideration of a ratification of a professional services agreement with Root Policy Research for Housing Needs Assessment or Update and Assessment. Um, we have our housing director, Jackie Willingham, here. And, uh, Jackie, you want to give us a brief summary for this?
So, uh, Root was selected to do the update. And, uh, so we're just discussing the professional service agreement that has been already executed. Um, they are going to be on a short timeline to deliver the report in June. So the first community outreach is going to be at the end of the month. Um, and everybody is invited to come and participate in this process. Uh, we had reserved a room at, um, at Climax, at CMC at the Climax Room four oh one for the day. Um, and it sounds like they want to do a big group discussion in the morning and then go to one of the sites that we're developing. And then in the afternoon, have one-on-ones with electeds and leaders of the committee.
Okay.
What date was that again?
Uh, January twenty ninth.
Great.
Should be on your, should be on your calendars already.
So we, um, yeah, we chatted about this in a work session as well. You presented us your rubric and, uh, a review that your group did for the various responses to the RFP. And Root Policy have the strongest proposal, including that community outreach. Do we have any other questions for Jackie on the request?
I don't at this time.
Okay. Um, do you have, I'll entertain a motion?
Um, I will make a motion that we approve, or approve the ratification of the PSA, the Professional Service Agreement with Root Policy Research for the Housing Needs Update and Assessment.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
None for me?
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, thanks, Jackie.
I don't have that on my calendar.
The twenty ninth?
Yeah.
I thought we had. It's in January, right? I thought I saw it come through.
I, I'll look. Usually requests show up, but I'll do.
Okay. All right. Item three, discussion and consideration of a public service, or professional service agreement with My Rural Planner LLC for the Department of Local Affairs Incentives Grant Infrastructure and Site Planning Planner and Project Manager, also led by Jackie. Um, and this is, uh, this is a project management for our ongoing, um, incentives project that we've been working on for a while. Tim, no. A year or two? I don't know. Feels like it. But Jackie, you want to give us just a brief outline there? I think it's pretty straightforward as well.
Right. So we put out an RFP for Planner Project Manager to help drive this project. Um, what's exciting is that My Rural Planner was, we only had one, responded. But of course, Michael was instrumental in getting us to this point and getting us, um, over the finish line to get a new square. So he's very kind and informed about the community and what needs to happen. Um, it's going to be a whirlwind. Um, he's, he's, uh, he's going to kill me. Um, but anyway, so I'm excited that he did respond to this. Um, the developers of committee did, uh, we did not have a meeting like we did last time. And so I have, um, piece now information from each of them. Uh, Michael Leahy's response was, um, Maggie knows that Michael's a progressive thinker about public, like our private partnerships. He's clearly committed to Lake County and rural housing and put together a clean RFP response. And then Ann and Chapin, um, rated him well. The, uh, lowest, um, score he got was that he's got a small team of two. But he got fours and fives on everything else, including coming in at our sixty thousand dollar budgeted amount. And so I would love it if we would consider him for this. Um, he is ready to make this happen.
Excellent. Any questions for Jackie before you entertain a motion?
None for me.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, professional services agreement with My Rural Planner LLC for our DOLA Incentives Infrastructure and Site Planning Grant as the Planner and Project Manager.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you for your consideration.
Very exciting.
I know. I'm really excited for that too.
Oh, boy.
Taking your does?
Resolution. Working out. Getting it done. All right. Um, item four on the list, we have discussion and consideration of a professional service agreement with Orange Political Strategies for Lake County Government Lobbying Services. And this is, will be led by Tim Burkin, our County Manager.
Sure. For, so for items four and five, I've talked broadly and then for each firm. So, um, this year, you know, the commissioners have, um, asked for further engagement at the state level. Um, so we did put out an RFP for political consultants on that. We did get back to, um, qualified firms, uh, and folks that would represent Lake County well. And, um, you know, be by your side down at the Capitol, um, for issues that are coming up at the state legislature. So originally, we had set aside a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for both, um, our, for, for the RFP. Um, both came back with around sixty K for that. So my proposal would be to fully fund both of those, just given what we know that will be coming in this legislative session. So with that, I would take twenty thousand dollars out of the manager's contingency budget, um, to add to, to be able to fulfill these RFPs. Uh, I do think it will be money well spent on that. And for Orange Political Strategies, um, that would be a focus on kind of like local government affairs. So it could be human services, public health, um, also land use and other things that really impact, uh, local governments. And then the areas where the Kenny Group would be focusing on would be, um, economic development, transportation funding, housing, um, and then, um, finding funding for unfunded mandates from the state. Both, both lobbying firms, uh, have worked together in the past and are fine representing Lake County Government as a client together on various issues. Um, and of course, you know, whether it's land use or housing, I imagine both firms will be working on it, representing Lake County Government and your interests at the State Capitol.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm very excited to start a different path or enhance our strat, strategies. At the State Capitol. Um, yes, that's, that's exciting. And I also would like to note that Orange is spelled correctly. For.
Thanks for letting me tell.
Um, any questions for Tim? I, well, I wouldn't have a problem doing that. I think it's worth the investment. And we can definitely use this as a kind of a pilot year for that kind of, um, support for this board that we haven't had before.
Yeah, I think so.
Any concerns?
No, I don't, I don't have any concerns. I think just for, um, like transparency to the public. Like there's a, there's a lot of decision-making that's happening at the state right now that if we don't have a voice for advocacy, we'll just be part of, like, here's what we're telling you to do instead of here's what we want to do or what can fit in our community. And so I think like this is, this will be money well spent.
Yeah.
Not only just now, but in the future as well. So I, I think just, um, this just helps our community get their bang for their buck with elected officials as really driving that policy and being the representation of our constituency. So, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean, totally agree that, that, I mean, specifically like local property taxes, local codes and, you know, a lot of stuff around housing and on and on. But like a lot of stuff that directly, directly affects our authorities and, and, yeah. So, and also I just wanted to add, I, it sounds like there's already been some conversation about like which, which lane that two different groups will be in. So that's great. Cause that was like, I think my one concern about having to was that, you know, making sure that we're being efficient and being in the lanes. But so that, that's great.
What's the timeframe on that amount of money? Like the legislative session or a year or?
Uh, so the legislative session starts in January and it ends in May.
Okay. And ask what this is for?
Yep.
And then they'll be done?
Yeah. Yeah. So specifically, I mean, the agreements, I think the proposals run through June. Just so if there's one other and stuff like that. And so just, just for the point of reference on this one, um, when Orange, their proposal, their revised proposal opinion and retainer fifty-five thousand for their services through June. And they did sign off on our standard, uh, professional services agreement.
Um, will we meet with them? Okay, sorry. I was just, I see, um.
Yeah, both, um.
Kenny's.
Both firms, um, responded, you know, that once these are executed. So we can start quicker with a Zoom meeting, but they're more than happy to come up to Leadville, meet with the commissioners, understand your priorities better, um, and work with you and start to map out the live session. And then also start meetings with, uh, Representative McCluskey and Senator Bailey, who are, are easily, um, who are our local state officials.
Excellent.
Wonder, maybe it's not too late. Like we have a work session Thursday. Wonder if we want to have, have some time on that agenda or another time to start mapping out, like?
For us?
Yeah, for us.
And prep for that conversation?
And maybe, yeah. And maybe invite departments too to try to.
There's two items on Thursday. My suggestion would be either the next one or the next work session are empty. And put it on there.
I don't, I don't, and for any other reason than?
I think the O H V conversation is going to be pretty hefty. Um, and just giving departments and then it to kind of reflect if you want them to be a part of the conversation, giving them a little bit of runway might help, but. Everyone would like to proceed. I was in the insights.
I think you're right on the O H V.
Yeah, that being said, I'm happy to sit up here too for five hours.
And we can, uh, we have the leadership team meeting on Thursday as well, so we can add it to our agenda there.
That would be great.
So we can start that and then departments can start to think through.
Yeah.
Big issues, non-issues, things like that. And then we can be, uh, better prepared for a work session either with or without the, the firms present.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, may, maybe we could add it to the eleventh agenda and see how our time goes. Cause yeah, and I'm free until one, like.
And we can just have a phone call.
Yeah, yeah, just start.
I'm up for that. Does that work for you?
I think it's fine.
And then we can table it or whatever the right word is.
Yeah. No, that works great.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, let, would you add that, please, Liz?
Yes.
Just for, see if we get to it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on the professional services agreements for items four and five?
None.
I was just going to mention, they might be better handled separately is that for the Kenny Group, their principal was out of pocket, so he wasn't able to sign off on the agreement. So, um, and they revised their proposal as of yesterday. So that might be one you want to.
Pending?
Do pending final legal.
Legal review?
For that one instead.
Okay.
So, so Orange is final and Kenny is pending?
Yes.
All right. I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the professional service agreement with Orange Political Strategies.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me. Thank you.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the professional service agreement with the Kenny Group for, um, lobbying services pending legal review.
So moved.
Final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
No, none for me. Thank you.
None for me.
All right. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Yes, you're welcome.
Um, all right. Item six, we have a discussion and consideration of the County Manager's twenty twenty-four contract. And, um, we had done a, um, employee review and the contract changes really just include, um, salary increases that we have been awarding across, um, our organization. Um, I don't, does anybody have any questions or concerns for Chris or Tim?
No, I don't.
No. It looked like both of you talked about.
Uh huh. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the County Manager's twenty twenty-four contract.
Uh, second.
Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
None for me.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, item seven, discussion adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one, an annual appropriation budget adoption and resolution for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And we've got our policy advisor and our county manager, um, Steph McBride and Tim Burkin leading our discussion. Um, and then just another reminder, um, the state had extended, with the valuation changes, the state had extended, um, jurisdictions of already to approve their final twenty twenty-four budget to January tenth. Um, and so we took advantage of that, giving our assessor's office some more administrative time and to, to iron things out. But I'll hand it over to either of you.
Sure.
Keep going.
Yeah. I remember this part.
Um, so this presentation will go over the final twenty twenty-four budget. Um, after our, um, budget review in twenty-three and work sessions that we've completed to date, um, focusing on the commissioner's priorities. Uh, just a reminder for the, um, for everyone, the Board of County Commissioners priorities in a certain order for twenty twenty-four are the development and implementation of an asset management plan, driving forward our community justice work, economic development, housing, and a continued focus on our organizational development. And the following slides that we'll go through will touch on each of these, uh, areas and also the, the budget as a whole. So the evaluation that we received last week from the assessor's office, um, which is a three hundred and sixty-five million, seven hundred and seventy-four, three hundred. Lake County Government along with CMC, I believe, are the only property taxing, uh, entities in Lake County that have lowered their mills, uh, for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the commissioners gave guidance to lower the mill levy, uh, AKA the property tax rate to thirty-eight. For those of you who want to.
Tim, sorry, can I interrupt you? Are we sharing this on the?
Yep.
Yes.
For those watching or for anyone who wants to, um, figure out how property tax is made, you can take the valuation, multiply by the mill levy and then divide by a thousand, um, which would give the Lake County Government, um, a property tax revenue of thirteen point eight million. Lake County sales tax is set at four percent, so we're estimating five point eight million in sales tax revenue. Uh, two percent of the sales tax collected in the city limits is remitted to the city of Leadville via Board of County Commissioners Resolution. Uh, the proposal that we have, um, so for this agenda item and then the next one, when you certify your mills, um, would be the breakout of your mills. Uh, one thing to note would be the second to last one is the mill levy credit. We will be claiming, uh, mill levy credit, um, this year of one point four million dollars. And the total, uh, mills assessed, you'll see the third from the bottom is thirty-eight mills and then the equating revenues there. So everything that we, um, how the mills are proposed right now, um, has been based off of historical and then also, um, you know, like the insurance fund, what it will cost us in twenty twenty-four to pay for our health insurance and our casualty and property insurance. You will notice on the ambulance fund, the third one down, um, the resolution for that states that, um, Lake County can provide, um, I can't remember, a certain, a set of mills are up to seven hundred and fifty K max. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the treasurer's office made an erroneous overpayment, uh, last quarter to St. Vincent Hospital District in discussions with them. Um, instead of paying that back, they had asked that the twenty twenty-four, um, payments would be reduced. So that's why you see it reduced by, it's not this full seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then do you have any, any questions on this? I think some of the following slides will answer those, but we can answer any initial questions that you have now.
Nothing right now.
Just a small, on the last, that you said two percent gets remitted to the city of the sales tax, is it not the full four percent?
It's the full four percent within the city limits.
I think it's the full four percent. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that.
Is it the four percent into the city or two percent of the sales tax?
Two percent of the sales, so, so it's a four percent county sales tax and two percent of the sales tax collected within the city limits permitted to the city of Leadville.
Not the full four percent?
No.
Okay. I wonder if it's in there. Okay. All right. Uh, yeah, no.
We have, um, Liz has done an outstanding job. Um, she probably could have written another dissertation on it, on the history of sales tax in Lake County. So Chris and I are, are still reviewing that, but, um, want to come on, on sales tax in Lake County and Leadville. Uh, is it a breakout looking at sales tax over the past two years? Yellow being twenty twenty-three. As you can see, you know, we've, we've done a lot better than twenty twenty-two when speaking with other managers in the surrounding counties. Their sales tax numbers are down. Ours obviously are not. Um, so the boon, the boon for us in terms of revenue, but obviously has mitigating, um, or other, other factors of, uh, over tourism and, and impacts in our community. But, um, the revenue side is nice. A breakdown of, uh, how the sales taxes have worked, um, over the past year. You can see, you know, we've received five point five and the city's received three point seven out of the total of nine point three million. So looking at the general funds, we have our twenty-two actuals, our twenty-three projected and then, uh, our, both the budget before you have the twenty-four budget. Um, so you can see, we're beginning cash balance, then looking through the operating revenue areas, total taxes, ending cash balance. And then as always, what we will do going forward, looking at the, the mine taxes and then what, um, what our general fund would look like without, um, revenue from Climax. So for, um, for twenty twenty-four, um, given in the general fund, the operating net line, so the B O C C, uh, is left with a little over a million dollars, um, in discretionary, um, funding, which leaves us with a general fund cash balance of fourteen point eight million. Pauses for questions, but you know, ask, I didn't, um. So looking at total operating revenue for the general fund, a majority of that comes from our local taxes, both sales and property and then, um, other areas, uh, from, you know, grants, fines, our fees for services, intergovernmental things and all of that. So it'll put us at a total operating revenue of twenty-five million, uh, for general fund. And we've, um, we've broken out our expenditures, right, following G F O A standards. Um, I'm kind of wrapping each department up into, into categories. So, you know, general government would be made up of all the elected offices, the manager's office, the attorney. Um, personnel expenses are the main drivers there and actually for all of them are, um, are our personnel costs. And actually, for all of them are um, are our personnel costs, but you can see what um, what general uh, what the general fund budget will look like in 2024 for in terms of expenditures. And I'm looking at total uh, supplies and services for um, for general fund expenditures. You can see that um, here we have, we still have a net uh, at the end of the year of close to half a million dollars. The supplies and services have increased, they've given um, inflation, things like that. However, each department did go through and reduce their supplies and services budgets uh, throughout the budget process this year. So as we continue to refine and work on our budget process, this will be something that we'll continue to focus on, on managing those costs um, as best we can. So when you look at Lake County government funding, um, you know, we have a, a host of other funds. So when you consider this slide, um, some of these funds are funded by um, you know, by the general fund, however, we did not double count them in this, we're just listing out the other funds and then what the budgets would be for those funds. So for a majority of these, um, you know, like road and bridge, you know, comes from uh, gas tax funding, other funding streams. Public health is state and federal, same with human services. Housing is, is general fund, but also grant funds, goal is grant. Airport is a special revenue fund, blood lead is funded by the ASARCO trust. Uh, landfill is a special revenue fund, landfill closure is funded by both landfill and um, general fund. Do you want me to, I can?
No, we, I mean.
All right, I can, if you'd like. Uh, looking what our operating costs will look for, or look like in 2024, so majority of it is general government. That public safety line, just a nuance there, that is the um, the county's contribution to the Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue uh, department at the city, so that is not uh, Sheriff Speckman. Sheriff Speckman is included in the general government, um, chunk of the pie. Looking at uh, total revenues and expenditures for that, broken out, um, so you can see each area that the general fund um, funds. So looking at general government with the commissioners, myself, finance, H R, I T, clerk and recorder, the treasurer's office, assessor sheriff, district attorney, coroner, and the county attorney in her office, um, and the various other ways um, where the budget is broken out. So again, the nuance on this one, but this, this gives you a picture of other funds operating costs. While some of them are funded or have, do have general fund contributions, um, this is what our other fund operating costs look like. Different way to look at it. And then this one, so this year for community contributions, uh, the commissioners have used um, part of, some of these will be general funds. Some of them will be local, local assistance and tribal consistency funding and remaining ARPA funding, um, but to meet um, community needs, so various um, various funding levels for our community partners. I think you get, I don't know if you have any questions on any of these.
The C four three hundred thousand, is that in addition to the?
Or does that include the, the mortgage or?
That is, that is separate.
Okay.
Yeah, the uh, separate pot, um, or separate amount of money, I should say.
Okay.
So yeah, so that three hundred thousand to C four, I'm working with Emily right now on kind of what that like, initial scope of work um, will look like, but that will bolster their, uh, I believe it's called their energy improvement program, which is energy efficient appliances, other um, upgrades to homes, and then this will expand, expand what they can do.
Okay.
There.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. The three, sorry. The three hundred thousand is to C four alone?
Mm-hmm.
Or is that not our? Wasn't that our?
No, so you'll um.
I think it's on the.
On the next.
Yeah.
Or it will be, sorry, one second, so, sorry, ignore that part of it.
I think ignore the C four on this, because I think that's taken out of somewhere else.
But that was, that was the community contribution, was the three hundred thousand was to C four for both for the, the maintenance enhancements and deferred maintenance and the deed restrictions.
Show up on this slide because they're a community partner, but it's coming from the general fund.
Yes.
Okay.
And then.
This is coming from general. I thought that was a.
Yeah.
Is that, is the hundred and forty to the economic development corporation, all of their?
Those are full requests. Those are full requests for, I think primarily cover the two positions. Off of their operating.
All of their money comes from this?
No.
Okay, oh, they have membership?
They did, and they, they have a fund balance as well.
Okay, that's great.
Um, and I do have another slide, but there is, there is a three hundred thousand dollar contribution to Cloud City Conservation Center, which goes towards um, uh, goes towards the uh, deferred maintenance in the community. So we had discussed around probably two hundred thousand dollars to increase. So currently, C four will do one-time funding of up to eight hundred dollars to help um, a um, a community member. Appliances, things like that. We'll increase it to um, this will increase that up to five thousand dollars. And then for that deed restriction piece, we had discussed probably around like a hundred thousand dollars for larger ticket.
Mm-hmm.
Um, repairs to folks' homes, honor to address deferred maintenance of ten to twenty thousand dollars in exchange for a deed restriction, um, which is something that is still, the, the VOCC still needs to determine a model deed restriction that you would like to see. And then there, so keep this one in mind, and then when we, uh, there's another uh, breakout that addresses that housing priority, so then you'll see the, the other funding.
Okay.
Um, looking through this, this just shows uh, twenty-two actuals, twenty-three projected, and then the twenty-four budget for general government. You will see um, increases, a majority of those uh, are all related to personnel. And they're fulfilling FTE requests, um, and then addressing um, the, excuse me, the um, wage adjustments that the VOCC um, has given the green light for, for 2024, the four percent COLA, um, and uh, four percent base wage increase plus uh, the various um, CLT ones. If you look at the, the human resources line, that is where the merit-based pool, um, and other incentive funding, like the bilingual pay incentive are, are living, so that is still to FTE, but they are managing uh, the merit-based pool, um, and other employee incentive funding, funds. So that's why you see the increase there. And that's all I have for that slide. Uh, same thing for public works, see the um, maintenance, road and bridge, landfill, uh, airport, and transit funding. So for the, for the transit funding, what we had discussed is um, budgeting for it, um, while uh, the commissioners, um, and led by Commissioner Marcela, work on what that implementation looks like, but we just wanted to build it into the budget. So we have it there.
And that includes our federal and local much.
Yeah.
For that. And, and we may, we may not reach that dollar amount, it might be less than that.
Uh, public health, um, includes seniors, veterans, public health, blood lead program, and human services. And then the county contribution to our human services budget. It's about seven percent, well, thirteen percent um, um, out of their uh, thirteen point nine million dollar budget. A majority of that comes through state and federal funding for um, public assistance programs, and then county admin. Public health contribution, um, so the county contributes about fifty percent to uh, the public health budget. Uh, other areas of that, um, you know, come from state and federal funding. Um, some of that, you know, still is remaining COVID funds, but there are other opportunities that we've been working on through the federal and state government um, to, to bolster that funding and limit the pressure on the uh, uh, the general fund. Rec and culture includes our library, parks, rec and open space, get outdoors Leadville, CSU extension, and tourism departments.
Can you remind me if uh, Get Outdoors Leadville has subsidized with grant funding? Is it through 2024?
Through the end of this year.
Through the end of this year.
And then the county will.
Couple of years are, are very well flushed with grant funds.
Okay.
But we have not, waiting for approval of this, and we're waiting to see what the forecast looks like pursuant to future funds. But three twenty-five, we're forming.
Okay.
One twenty-five percent.
Awesome, thank you. Sounds good.
Oh, look, safety includes the fire control budget and contributions to that, OEM, um, nine-one-one, search and rescue and the community justice project. Um, for search and rescue, the increase that you see there is, we're trying to figure out um, adding in a vehicle, so we're in the midst of replacing one of their vehicles and adding it to our fleet program. So that's why you see that increase, but that is, it's a, it's a capital purchase that is kind of being, being done through Public Works and the Sheriff's Office, but we needed someplace to account for it, and since it is a SAR vehicle, that's where we're accounting for it. Community, community development includes community planning and development, housing, and our housing fund.
Okay.
So this is, this is the slide to keep in, keep in mind with the community contribution slide. Okay. I was the one who made the mistake of the community contribution, so I didn't understand what you're doing.
I see what you did.
Yeah.
I get it.
Okay, I added the C four on the community contribution side, so that was my bad, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
So that, the three hundred, the other, the, the other three hundred thousand dollars on the community contribution slide is, would be going towards um, some of the work with Full Circle for rental and mortgage assistance, things like that. The board has discussed higher dollar amounts for that, we do have funding available to do that, um, based on demand that we see. We had discussed dispersing that funding to the Full Circle or perhaps the community fund, we could do that in tranches. Um, so they're not, so Full Circle's not, you know, waiting for reimbursement on these things, so they actually have the funding upfront. And then on this one, um, for the board priority on housing, so remaining ARPA funds is about ninety-two K. Um, the commissioners, you guys have previously given guidance and direction for that to go to human services. So that is being utilized to address um, transitional and emergency housing through wraparound, both um, zero through twenty-one and then adult wraparound. And then other areas, other um, clients, um, kind of to, the higher uh, the higher case management need, uh, clients to address some of their deferred housing um, issues.
Okay.
And for our L A T C funding that we received from the federal government, um, you had given guidance to, for the three hundred thousand dollars to partner with CMC on the site planning and site work, um, up at uh, the CMC campus, now where the old, old, old dorms used to be. Um, the partnership with C four and then um, the deed restrictions and other housing assistance programs. So dedicating all of the local assistance and tribal consistency funding towards housing.
Cool. Great.
Uh, the commissioners continue to invest in our best asset, which is our personnel, who um, get all of, all of our work done. So for this year, uh, for 2024, all staff will receive a uh, four percent COLA and a four percent base weight, base wage increase. We started a new wellness benefit, uh, which will look at uh, for about four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for full-time employees. So it's be used for ski passes, whatever, new tennis shoes, pickleball racket, whatever, other things. Those kind of things, so we'll, we'll analyze it and see, you know, see how it's used in utilization. I believe our, our broker said it'd be probably about sixty percent utilization, so see how it does. We've given approval for another merit pool for up to three percent. Um, in 2024, uh, Zoe and Karina are um, further working on our diversity, equity, and inclusion training. Our learning and development fund to develop our staff's professional skills. The second language proficiency, uh, and then other incentives, uh, such as, you know, the gift cards we give out, little bonuses and bumps, you know, kind of here and there throughout the year to reward employees for work well done. And then, of course, our intern fund, um, which will live within H R, but you know, if it's a public works intern, obviously we'll work at a public works, but it won't impact their budget.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Uh, so looking at this, so twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four uh, personnel numbers over the years. So yes, uh, Lake County government has grown, but we have grown in thoughtful ways uh, to meet um, residents' needs uh, and wants in the community. Uh, a lot of those come around, um, like, for example, like, growing our finance department to manage the public's money better. We've grown our human services uh, department to better address uh, community needs and wants. Uh, OEM, focus uh, there um, for various mitigation efforts, um, things like that. So that, that's a lot of areas where you'll see the growth there, and then also with uh, Sheriff Speckman's office um, to meet that law enforcement need within our community. So yeah, so just personnel numbers year over year for you guys. And then looking at personnel in terms of numbers for a general fund, so um, out of the general fund, we have about, we have a hundred and twelve FTEs. This is what our personnel costs look like for the general fund. Other funds personnel, so our remaining FTEs, what that, those personnel costs look like?
Okay.
And then this, is this the fund balance? Slide?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that is fund balance.
No, that's right, there, we're trying to figure out the way to um, fit it on one slide. So uh, this would be our 2024 uh, fund balances. Projected year end.
Yeah.
So with, with the work session that we had at the end of December on allocating all the, the balance of the general fund, where are we? Because I don't see that in the budget message either, where are we identifying all those things?
We can do whatever we want, in my personal opinion, though. It's uh, as you're extending that, you do a supplemental budget for it. So I think Tim would bring us a resolution to say, like, hey, we've decided to put out for R and P horizontal infrastructure on Harrison Field. And we will allocate that out of our fund balance.
Okay, I just, I was under the impression that you in particular were more comfortable with actually putting that into line items and identifying those intentions somewhere.
Yeah.
Do you want to, I mean, I think it might be. Do you want to, I mean, I think it might be nice to do that somewhere.
Well, I thought we had talked about doing that in February, right?
Uh yes, um so, uh so both of you are right. And to, to try and thread the needle on this, so we, for everything that you had discussed in the last work session, we have just not have the time to actually like fully break that out. I would also suggest, I don't know that you guys have had the full time, whether it is like in order traits or things like that, to, to fully hash out fund balance uh spend down and to address those needs. So if you think, yes, you are right, it can be done through the supplemental budget process um to bolster your current twenty twenty four priorities and then the other areas that we know that are coming. So that, so that you can address those needs, actually get the ball moving on a lot of those projects and that. So that's what, that's what you have not seen it in the, in the budget message um or proposed um in the, in the twenty twenty four budget.
Okay, okay.
The only uh other thing I would just for this picture, um you can't end in the negative, so those that are, are in the negative. If we could either do a transfer to cover that or whatever, because we can't.
Yeah.
Submit that the way it looks.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is, um yes, great point for, for the housing fund, I think we can find the twenty six bucks. When you look at like the, the ambulance services, it's kind of like reflecting that um amount that was overpaid.
Okay.
In there, so that, that one should, that one will be a zero, but just another way to think of it, um search and rescue, we can do the, um we can move around the, the capital asset on that. And then blood lead, um we still need to have the um.
Trust.
Thank you.
Transfer?
L C C H.
L C C H P.
Oh, you still need to adopt that budget, correct?
Oh, that's right.
Uh I can't recall, but that's quite possible.
I don't remember.
Okay. I think we, yeah, so for, so for blood lead, um I believe you, you guys still need to, to call that meeting and approve that budget out of the, out of the trust fund, so that one will also be taken care of.
Okay, cool.
Sounds good, do you, are you, are you, I mean, do you want to put some addition to the budget message on all of the specific things we talked about with the intent to allocate and spend down the general fund balance? Or invest?
I think, I think if we can leave it high level, we can add that like these are the programs that we talked about in December to fund through the general fund. And then when we meet in February, assign a dollar amount to it, under a supplemental budget, cause I don't, I don't know that we have like a nailed down dollar amount on.
No.
But, but I think if we could include something in there of like, we plan to invest this money into those initiatives we talked about in December, that would be good.
Okay, cause that's, I mean, I think you, I am comfortable either way personally. Because I do think that we have every intention to invest those, those dollars down. You had raised that particular concern about keeping, you know, a large fund balance to what end and to what benefit to the community, so if you want to, maybe we can draft something that kind of will help you.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, maybe some of the other pieces too, you know, all of the, the items that we discussed are included, I, I could argue are theoretically included in the overview of the economic development and all of these things and further investment. So I don't know that it's greatly necessary, but I wanna make sure that you're comfortable with.
No, that's totally fine, no, that's, I think, yeah, I'm fine with that. And then I think once we work through some of that in February and then come up with like assigning those A I Ps out and funding those A I Ps, then we can go through that and create that supplemental of, like, we're gonna allocate this out of fund balance to Jackie's department or Pro's or whatever that looks like, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, so no.
No, it's fine.
And necessarily hard changes to the budget message of this month, okay. So make sure.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Tim. Are you, sorry, are you good?
Good, thank you. I would have raised my hand.
And Sisley over here. Okay.
Um so lots of thanks to Stephanie, our new budget and policy advisor, she loves this time of year.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie.
To our communications director, Sarah Edwards, deputy finance director, Jessica Snyder, uh and operations coordinator, Liz S Miller.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Um and then all of C L T and all staff who have participated in this budget process. Um it is, can be very annoying and painstaking work, but it is the most important work that we do managing and allocating the public's money. So thank you to everyone, I appreciate everyone's help. This is um uh our budget, this, we're a hundred percent better than last year, and last year we're a hundred percent better than the year before.
Yeah.
Just get that right.
Robust uh process, but at least I've seen, yeah. But thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
This is incredible, I mean, and, and, and not only just throwing around the numbers and making sure we're hitting our priorities uh collectively for the community, but just the, the communication across the organization of how everybody fits into those priorities is um invaluable in the process, so yeah. It's been great.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Cool. May I do approve the resolution?
They sure do. They sure do. Do we wanna see if there's public comment?
Oh, yeah, I meant for us, so please.
Absolutely, we do. Um.
Sorry, I had one moment.
Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry, I wanted, typically we read the high level mess, budget message. Um maybe I'll read that first and then we'll open up to other comments. Um, okay. Which, where, oh, I have the budget message pulled up in the application here.
You have the budget message?
Yeah, I finished, I just, I pulled it up. The long one, yep, I was gonna read the uh transmit a letter and the executive summary. I have, I do this, yes, is it the same, it's the same link? Yeah, it should be the same link. Okay, then I, do you want your computer back?
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you so much, I appreciate that. All right, uh dear citizens of Lake County, financial management is the most important role that Lake County government is responsible for administering. We consider it top priority as the leaders of Lake County government to be good stewards of your tax dollars. To that end, we have developed a robust, robust financial management and budget process to determine how to best serve and the constituency of Lake County while also fulfilling our mission as Lake County government of investing in people, equipment and infrastructure in a long-term, financial, sustainable manner. To the tw, the twenty twenty four budget process began in June of twenty twenty four. Each department leader was tasked with, with reporting their budgetary asks while reflecting on their twenty twenty three budget in a responsible way. The Lake County Board of County Commissioners were presented these budgetary asks, made suggestions and started to make decisions as to how they would like the citizens and visitors of Lake County to be best served. The budget team spent countless hours during the last two quarters of twenty twenty three looking over financial documents, department operating budgets, supplemental budget requests and reviewing financial policies that are in place for Lake County government. We crunched numbers, made edits and found ways to best utilize tax dollars and fees received from Lake County citizens and visitors alike. In the end, we have determined a budget that is in place that will best serve Lake County. We support our community through initiatives in housing, economic development, community justice, asset management planning and organi, organizational development. We will also continue to offer professional, timely services to Lake County through twenty twenty four. As always, we welcome feedback from community stakeholders in the Lake County community as we continue to serve you in a financially sustainable and reasonable way, responsible way, apologies. Um written feedback can be submitted via the Lake County government website at www.lakcountyco.gov forward slash forum center, forward slash finance dash seven, forward slash budget dash public, dash comments, dash fifty, five zero, okay. And let's see, I'll just read. I'll read um the next, the executive summary and then the investments, just the summary of the investments. Lake County government exists to provide public service that enhance the quality of life for our residents, businesses and visitors. Elected officials and their staff aim to efficiently fulfill statutory duties related to responsible government oversight, policy development and regional stra, strategic planning led by our Board of County Commissioners. Public safety guided by our sheriff, retention of public records, motor vehicle licensing and administration of elections fulfilled by our clerk and recorder. Fair assessment and properties contributing to our public tax base calculated by our assessor and thoughtful stewardship of tax dollars and public revenue streams served by our treasurer. County departments fulfill additional duties related to maintenance of sharing community app, maintenance of shared community assets, parks, recreation facilities, county offices, roads and landfill by public works. Enhancements to public safety through the Office of Emergency Management and collaborations with the regional fire department and animal shelter and search and rescue. Fair and inclusive permitting and inspections related to, to the development of our built environment through community planning and development. Preservation and development of affordable housing by the housing department. Basic community health services related to the community through public assistance programs and health programs administered by our human services and public health environment departments. Social and educational, social, educational and recreation offerings created and operated by Parks Rec, Parks Recreation and Open Space, library, tourism, Colorado State University Extension, airport, veteran services and the senior center. And optimal operations of the organization as a whole overseen by the county manager, county attorney, finance department, human resources department and their respective staff. With the budget book, sorry, within the budget book, each department contributes a page that describes their core services for the community, current challenges and the goals they have crafted to create opportunities. Additionally, the B O C C provided direction in the fall for the twenty twenty four budget to include allocations and thoughtful investment toward key priorities of affordable housing, asset management, community justice and economic development. These initiatives are interdepartmental, meaning multi, multiple county departments collaborate, collaborate with each other and community partners and stakeholders to make progress to meet these overarching community needs. Investments in Lake County's strategic priorities, asset management planning and deferred maintenance. Sorry, asset management and deferred maintenance. Well, actually, all of these are listed. I'll read through these, sorry, does anybody mind if I read through those?
No, no, you're good.
Um then I'll stop. Um asset management plan and deferred maintenance. For twenty twenty four, one of the early goals for the Lake County is to have a plan for financial sustainability for the county's infrastructure and capital assets. Our constituents are aware of failing infrastructure like the aquatic center and some of our park and recreation assets that need to be updated and replaced. The county has also shared the statutory and practical need for improved court, jail and justice related facilities. As we look across all of our inventory of administrative offices, the library, the Sixth Street Gym, senior center, as well as our roads and bridges and our fleet and equipment, we will over, we see over three decades of deferred maintenance that also need to be addressed to serve contemporary and future programming needs. The county will be more successful at planning and raising money for all of our overlapping needs if we complete an assessed inventory and management replacement plan. Interdepartmental staff committees have been developed to produce a more accurate inventory system where we can have a better means for tracking assets in our inventory, establishing department roles and accountability, prioritizing improvements and improving policies and procedures for acquisition of assets and proper disposal of assets. Community justice initiatives, while community justice primarily impacts the budget as a grant funded initiative, the human services department is also concurrently developing a more comprehensive language justice strategy and budgeting for more equitable inter, inter, oh, sorry, equitable, equitable interpretation policies benefiting both our constituents and those hired as Lake County interpreters and translators. More about this program can be found on the department pages. Economic development, this budget prior, prioritizes expanding economic development to fit the needs of our growing community and residents to pave the path for a strong future. The county recently completed a lodging feasibility study that requires further vetting to leverage as a tool for thoughtful lodging developments. The B O C C will additionally, additionally consider innovative infrastructure projects. For example, preparatory development for business park at the airport. They have also invested in several community organizations with promise to drive forward economic development. Finally, a prosperous economic future will be best supported by strong investments in childcare and affordable housing. Several funding allocations in twenty twenty four address these opportunities. And housing, twenty twenty four will be the first full year of housing operations at Lake County, which is a sig, which is a significant initiative to help bridge the gaps between the growing demand for housing, increasing cost of living and the current low housing inventory within Lake County. The county leads regional housing initiatives by collaborating in the regional housing authority, contributing towards staff positions related to housing and overseeing and budgeting for current strategies of a regional housing authority, including, one, purchasing existing inventory and renovating, preserving it as affordable units, two, acquiring land on which to build twenty units in the next few years, three, master planning a large complex to be funded and built in the next several years, four, working with the county, with county and city leadership to create policies and programs to maintain secure and affordable housing for residents and incentive programs for owners willing to keep their properties affordable for locals to rent and buy. Five, partnering with Cloud City Conservation Center to expand funding for residents to address deferred maintenance on their homes. More details about twenty twenty four housing goals can be found in the department areas of this document. And then we go on, um and the document goes on for the overview and some technical and specific uh numbers that you have reviewed in your presentation already. Thank you, again, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Then I got one else, want to read that short resolution into record.
Do you want me to? Okay.
Can you see?
Yeah. I brought my glasses today. And I got me sunglasses for whatever, that's right.
Sure, please.
Okay. Um this is the proceedings of the Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake and State of Colorado, Resolution twenty twenty four dash one. Annual appropriation, budget adoption and resolution for the fiscal year of twenty twenty four. Be it resolved that the various sums as set forth in the budget marked and identified as exhibit A, Lake County Government twenty twenty four final budget, B, and the same hereby are appropriated to the various funds for the purposes stated therein, and such budget is adopted. Passed and adopted at a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners this ninth day of January twenty twenty four.
And before I forget, I do wanna open it up for public comment.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Um so when, in the budget message, it did reference the childcare stuff, Tim. Was that on the slide with the community investments, the, the eighty thousand dollars to the community fund? Okay, that's all.
Sure, yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, perfect, I just wanted to, okay, awesome, thank you. I just didn't remember seeing that, that's all I have, sorry. And it wasn't really public comment.
That was great, um all right, I'll open it up for public comment, and I'm not sure I see any in the room, but do we have anyone online that would like to make public comment on our twenty twenty four budget? I don't see any hands being raised, feel free to unmute if that's easier for you. And I don't think that we have any public comment. And I don't think that we have any public comment. All right. Last chance online. All right. It doesn't look like we have any public comments. Do we have any other questions or concerns for?
Did we get any public comment on the webpage in the?
Uh, no, the only public comment we received was from Mr. Day, which we read into the record last
On the tenth, yeah. December?
Um, yes, about uh, road and bridge budget.
Yep.
Awesome. That's all I had. That's the only question I had.
Um, if there's no further discussion, I will, or actually, I need to send it to the motion. Sorry.
I will make motion that we approve Resolution 2024-1.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, none from me, thank you.
None from me?
All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice work. Very good.
Thanks, you guys. It was great.
Fantastic. All right. Sure, you know. Five minute break?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, five minute break, it's eleven thirteen, we'll be back at eleven eighteen. There should be the news.
That's been sunny, great. All right, and it's eleven twenty-two. Uh, sorry, this took a few minutes longer. And we are back, here on item number nine? Think, hold on, let me double check.
Uh, eight.
Eight. Um, so item eight, we have the discussion and consideration of resolution, sorry, the adoption, discussion and adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two, um, certification of mill levies for Lake County. Tim, do you wanna walk through this, or shall we just read this?
Sure. Um, well, I'm, I'm happy to talk through it. Um, as we stated earlier at the beginning of the last agenda for the adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, so I'd just like to express thanks to the Lake County Commissioners for reducing the, um, mill levy, AKA the property tax rate in Lake County. Um, Lake County Government, along with Colorado Mountain College, seem to be the only, uh, taxing entities that lowered property taxes in this historic year, so it was a good move and a big move. Um, so, thank you for that. Um, and from that, we've been able to build your, your budget from there. Um, so we've reduced the mills from forty-one point nine-nine-nine to thirty-eight, uh, which will result in a revenue of thirteen point eight million dollars. If you look at the, um, the allocation of the mills is what we had discussed previously. So going towards the general fund will be a majority of those mills. Um, human services, ambulance, cat back, insurance, mine closure, um, are all funds that we have historically funded or contributed to. The cat back fund goes towards capital acquisition purchases for various departments. The mine closure fund was created by the voters of Lake County, so we are required to put money in there. I've still not been able to, um, answer, but we can invest that money. I do not know if that counts as putting money into that fund. Um, if that makes sense.
Not really.
I haven't been able to fully answer it.
Oh, oh, invest, like, like further investing for, uh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Um, so any, so any investment revenue received, would that count as a Lake County government contribution to the mine closure fund?
Right.
Or does it have to come from longer?
If they could feed itself, yeah.
Um, so we can invest it. Um, we will work in the Treasurer's Office so those funds are invested. Um, we can see increased investment revenue, at least while interest rates are high, along with other various funds. Um, and then also, uh, circling back to this, we will be seeking or are taking a mill levy credit of three point nine-nine-nine this year, which is about one point four million dollars.
Great, good. Um, I think we had a really great conversation in our last work session on, on all of our general fund balance allocations and, um, the mill levy consideration. And, uh, you know, we talked about the future, the future needs and demands aren't diminishing surely, but in the current, uh, climate of the cost of living, um, that we had a great discussion on the reduction of the mills. Um, but I just wanna, you know, that's not to say that, that that money not collected could and will certainly be needed in the future somewhere, but I think we have really great operational structure and foundation to move forward wisely in, in how we are improving investments and, um, uh, not only in the actual dollars, but in where we are allocating in the projects and the services we're providing. Um, so it, it was a great conversation. Any other comments from the board before we, um, consider the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two?
No, none for me, thank you.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt and pass Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two, the certification of mill levies for Lake County.
So moved?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And item nine, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three, a resolution amending application fees for the Lake County Community Planning and Development Department. And this will be led by Anne Schneider, our Community Planning and Development Director.
Thank you. Um, so the first thing I noticed that we'll have to change it, I think we've been given, um, Resolution number two, so you'll just have to.
I have the updated version up there.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Um, so, um, this is the long-awaited, um, consideration of, uh, fee, um, consideration for community planning and development. So we went into engagement, um, by the approval of the board with Barry Dunn to do a cost of service and fee, um, analysis. And so the fee schedule that we are bringing you today for adoption is in consideration of, of the outcome of that and the findings. Generally, you will see that, uh, fees in, uh, the department have, um, are being proposed to be increased by thirty percent. Um, and, um, there's discussion within, uh, the study that provides guidance for when the adequate, uh, when, um, the appropriate time, um, will be when we need to consider maybe another incremental change, uh, to fees. But we won't let them, um, under this new guidance and resolution, we wouldn't be, um, having those long lags of time, because it's been twenty-plus years, um, since, twenty-two years, um, since fees have been considered in the department. So, um, pretty excited to be bringing this forward and happy to answer any questions, but I think it's, um, pretty straightforward. And we did have the presentation by Barry Dunn, uh, to the board to kinda go through in a, in a little bit greater detail, um, the, uh, scope of work that they performed in, in establishing this new fee schedule. So, I hope to be answering any questions?
Done for me?
No, I think that work session covered it.
Thanks, Anne. Um, I'll read the resolution into the record. Um, Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three, a resolution amending application fees under the Lake County Land Development Code. Whereas, under Lake County Resolution oh-one dash twenty, the Board of County Commissioners established certain development application fees pursuant to the Lake County Land Development Code, um, Development Code. And whereas, Section three point one point three A of the Development Code provides that a development application must be accompanied by the fee that has been established by the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas, pursuant to the Lake County On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems, OWTS regulations, application fees are required for new OWTS septic permits, major and minor repairs. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners commissioned a cost recovery study to be performed by Community Planning and Development, the department, to evaluate the existing fee structure adoption in twenty-two thousand and one in consideration of the current costs associated with the services provided by the department. And whereas, Barry Dunn, McNeil and Parker LLC, um, Barry Dunn was engaged for the cost recovery study and prepared a cost of service analysis and fee study report, which projects the full cost of providing department services contained within the land use, OWTS permitting, special events, and short-term rental core service categories. And whereas, establishing cost recovery baselines allows for more detailed revenue and expenditure forecasts to be developed, which can serve as a foundation for assessing the level of fees necessary to meet revenue requirements, sustain current levels of service, and funded, and fund goals, initiatives, and enhance service delivery in the future. And whereas, based on the findings and recommendations of the Barry Dunn Cost of Service Study and Analysis, the Board of County Commissioners desires to hereby amend the development application fees contemplated in Section three point one point three A of the Development Code and rescind Lake County's Resolution zero-one dash twenty and now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Section one, purpose. The purpose of this resolution is to establish the application fees, which must be paid to Lake County for services provided by the Community Planning and Development Department specific to land use approvals under the Development Code and OWTS permitting under the Lake County OWTS regulations. Section two, findings. The Board of County Commissioners finds, finds and determines as follows. A, the county is authorized by law to set application fees for permits under the Development Code and Lake County OWTS regulations. B, Community Planning and Development is the primary county department charged with the duty to provide services and processes that were the subject of the fee recovery study. C, Barry Dunn has provided a final cost recovery fee schedule recommendation based on objective analytical findings, institutional knowledge, and considerations related to best practices in policy, process, level of service, funding, and technology. D, pursuant to the rationale of the case of Bainbridge Incorporated versus the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, nine sixty-four P, what is that, P dot two D five seven five? Um, the application fees, which may lawfully be charged by the county for department permits, they include both the direct and indirect costs of operating the Lake County Community Planning and Development Department, as well as the other county departments and personnel which assist in the review of such permits. E, the application fees established by this resolution do not exceed amounts required to offset the direct and indirect costs of operating Lake County Community Planning and Development Department and the county of processing applications under the Development Code and Lake County OWTS regulations. Section three, application fees under the Development Code. At the time of an application or permit submission to the Community Planning and Development Department, the following fee shall be paid to the county. And we have a long table of the types of applications and the fees and the variables. Um, I'll just go through that. Section four, fees non, not refundable or transferable. Once paid, all application and permit fees shall be non-refundable and non-transferable. No portion of any required application fee shall be refunded by the county if the application is withdrawn or the permit for which such fee is paid is denied. Section five, reimbursement of extraordinary review costs. An application seeking a land use approval under the Development Code shall be required to reimburse the county for any extraordinary review costs actually and necessarily incurred by the county in the review of such applicant's application, which shall be in addition to any fee established by this resolution. Such costs may include, without limitation, county attorney's fees, special counsel fees, and the fees of any consultant engaged by the county to assist in the application review process. Reimbursement for such extraordinary fees shall be preconditioned for the granting of all permits or approvals requested by the application as provided in Section three point one point three C of the Development Code. And/or such reimbursement may be compelled in a civil action brought by the county attorney on behalf of the county. Section six, referral agency fees. In addition to the fees provided for this resolution, an application for submit subdivision or other plat-related approval shall pay all fees charged by referral agencies to whom such applications must be referred by law. Section seven, fee exemptions and reductions. In accordance with Section three point one point three B of the Development Code, the county of, the Board of County Commissioners shall have the power to reduce the amount of a required application fee of a qualified applicant or to exempt a qualified applicant from the requirement to pay an application fee. Section eight, deposit requirements. In connection with any application under the Development Code that the Director of Community Planning and Development reasonably believes will require the county to incur out-of-pocket expenses of the type described in Section five of this resolution in the amount of one thousand dollars or more, the Director is authorized to require the applicant to deposit with the county an amount determined by the Director to be reasonable, to be a reasonable estimate of the costs that will be incurred by the county in connection with such application. Expenses incurred by Lake County that are chargeable to the applicant under Section five of this resolution shall be deducted from the applicant's deposit. As such deposit is depleted by payment of expenses incurred by the county, the Director may require the deposit amount to be replenished from time to time by the applicant. Section nine, interpretation. This resolution is intended to be supplemental to the provisions of the Lake County Land Development Code and Lake County OWTS regulations. In the event of any conflict between the provisions of this resolution and the provision, provisions of the Lake County Land Development Code and/or the Lake County OWTS regulations, the provisions of the Lake County Land Development Code and the Lake County OWT regulations shall control. Section ten, uh, police power findings. The Board of County Commissioners hereby finds, determines, and declares that this resolution is necessary and proper to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity, and improve the order, comfort, and convenience of the County of Lake and the inhabitants thereof. Section eleven, authority. The Board of County Commissioners hereby finds, determines, and declares that it has the power to adopt this resolution pursuant to the authority granted to counties in Colorado by Article twenty-eighth of Title thirty, CRS, County Planning and Zoning, County Planning, Zoning, and Subdivisions, Article twenty of twenty-nine, CRS, Local Government Land Use Control Enabling Act, and Title eleven of Title thirty, CRS, General County Powers. Section twelve, repeal. All resolutions previously adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, which are, are in conflict here with, are repealed. Without limiting the general, generality of the foregoing, that's certain resolution entitled a resolution amending application fees under the Lake County and Land Development Code, adopted April second, two thousand and one, a copy of which was recorded April second, two thousand and one in Book five hundred and fifty-seven, at page seven hundred and sixty-six of the Records of the Clerk and Recorder of Lake County, is hereby repealed. Section thirteen, date of effect. This resolution shall become effective upon its adoption. Um, I will entertain a motion, um, to pass Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Well done.
Yay!
Good man. Check your dress box. All right, and we'll move on to item ten. We have discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four, a resolution to support parks, recreation, open space, or PROS and Blue Elements in submitting a grant application for Great Outdoors Colorado Planning and Capacity Program, uh, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, six hundred, sorry, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two, six hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. We have Adam Bay, our PROS Director, here to lead us through that discussion.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to Liz and Tim for squeezing me in on this, uh, jam-packed, important day for folks. Uh, hopefully this won't take a whole lot of time. And thank you to Chris Floyd for, for tweaking this resolution to, to fit county priorities a little bit better. Uh, yeah, Blue Elements approached me, uh, late, uh, last summer, summer of twenty-three, uh, to talk about this concept. Blue Elements is a newer, uh, nonprofit, uh, focused on cultivating water stewardship, uh, in Lake County. Uh, embedded in their mission and approach is a focus on inclusiveness and reaching underrepresented groups. Talked with Emily Loopskey, uh, the Director, and a couple of board members of Blue Elements to make sure, uh, had an understanding of if they were going to duplicate efforts connected with, uh, Commissioner Mudge, who's leading some of the Forest Health work and, uh, helping with the emerging, uh, relationship with the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative. So, ARIC there. Uh, talked a little bit with Bryce Erlich over in Ann Shop, uh, as he's kind of an emerging water systems leader, uh, for us here at the county to make sure, uh, that we wouldn't duplicate any of those efforts as well. Uh, feel like this is a, a pretty good, uh, partnership that we could explore, uh, with Blue Elements, um, on the actual community outreach engagement pieces of anything related to our water work. And it's, as I am, uh, working towards offering a, uh, job to a new Deputy Director for Open Space, I would, uh, provide added support, um, for the, the community outreach and engagement piece of that, that job detail. Uh, essentially what is being asked is, uh, uh, county PROS would be submitting a, um, an application to Great Outdoors Colorado, GOCO, in their planning and capacity, uh, funding stream there. Uh, GOCO, of course, has been a great partner with us over the years, uh, not the least of which is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar award given to Get Outdoors Lead Bill, which addresses that two-year, don't have to throw general funds toward them, sort of, piece of the budget here. So they've been really great for us. GOCO has asked, uh, me to provide this resolution, so, uh, because, um, they want to have a government entity bring on the capacity for a new nonprofit in community to make sure that they can, they can handle, uh, a three-year grant at two hundred and twenty thousand. So that's, that's, the two hundred and twenty K spread out over thirty year, or three years, seventy grand a year. Uh, they intend to bring on thirty AmeriCorps volunteers to help with this. Uh, Blue Elements would manage that program, and we provide, uh, we have, we provide the administrative support, but then we also have the ability, uh, to, to be involved with the planning here. And so to understand what messaging is going out to our communities, where are our priorities, um, the waterside for the county. Uh, I think that's a pretty good move and not having to manage, uh, a group of, of AmeriCorps volunteers. You can see in the packet, there are several, um, letters of support from other nonprofits in this community who stand to benefit from this added capacity in the county. Uh, so it's a good, it can be a good show for county PROS, B O C C, to kind of extend a little extra help in building capacity for those, uh, other partner organizations like C four, um, and, and other groups that are in there. What else do I want to say on that? And again, it enhances our existing relationship with Great Outdoors Colorado, who is very supportive of this, uh, project, uh, and are excited to, to invest more money into water stewardship, outreach, and education. So, asking, uh, approval of this resolution, uh, so that we can submit on, on Blue Elements' behalf and have, uh, some, some oversight over the direction of the program.
Thank you. Any questions, Karen?
Uh, I have one question. So the, the in-kind contribution from Lake, is that also spread over three years?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, and it's really the administrative piece, which is, it's not trivial. I mean, it is a cost, but I think what we get on the return is not having to manage more staff.
Yeah, well, especially over three years, that's not a lot.
Any questions?
None for me, thank you.
I was just gonna mention, if it's, if the grant is awarded, we obviously want to have a, an agreement with Blue Element to describe the services and stuff that go needed.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think this is great, and I appreciate, I mean, Adam, as PROS is integrating, and we are with partners and with the organizations and with the water, um, uh, resource management of the county. You have a really great grasp on what that all could look like. And of course, I think as is maybe the, the gap, uh, in a lot of things, is that education and outreach piece and integrating, like, community understanding, um, and feedback on some of those pieces that we are developing. Um, and I think this could be a really great way to figure out what maybe the next iteration of like, uh, some sort of council or just, just support for partners like Central Colorado Conservancy and the Lake, Lake County Conservation District, um, CPD with Water Resource Management, um, and Open Space. I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, if there's no other questions for Adam, or we can certainly do that if something comes up in discussion um, after enter, a motion, um, to, uh, pass Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four, a resolution to support parks, recreation, open space, PROS, and Blue Elements in submitting a grant application for Great Outdoors Colorado, Colorado's Planning and Capacity Program.
So, so moved?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, none for me, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, CP. Conversation. See you, Teresa.
Oh, I didn't think to, well, Bryce, do you have anything to add there? Sorry, still sorry. That's okay, if not. Not a meeting, we'll just, we'll move on.
Oh, sounds great. Yep, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bryce. Um, all right, on to item eleven, discussion and appointment of Wendy Wysskill, Wysskill?
Wysskill.
Wysskill, to the Recreation Advisory Board, also led by our PROS Director, Adam Bay.
Yeah, yeah, and so, uh, Wendy approached Matt Mayn, uh, several months ago to be a part of the REC Advisory Board. Uh, Wendy, since that time, I, I said this was inevitable that I would bring this here. I, I am very supportive of her, uh, being a, a formal board member. Uh, since that, she has approached me, she showed up to every meeting, lots of contributions, lots of constructive feedback. Wendy also serves on our steering committee for the REC Center of feasibility study and is, uh, I'm not exactly sure of a board member, but solid member of PB Swims as well. So having that kind of link and, and kind of addressing any disconnect in communication across those organizations, I think is pretty key. Uh, Wendy brings a lot of excitement, enthusiasm, energy to the RAB, to the REC Advisory Board, which is kind of going through its own sort of evolution as well. Um, I just got grant writing experience, just, just a good, uh, community member, and I would, uh, encourage the, the board to, to support her appointment to that, to the RAB.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam?
None for me. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve Wendy Wysskill to the REC Advisory Board.
One second.
All right, um, any further discussion?
No, none for me, thank you.
None for me. Appointment, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And. All right, on to item twelve, discussion and consideration of our twenty twenty-three audit engagement letter from Henkel and Company. And, uh, Jessra is out, but Tim can give us a brief overview. Go right ahead.
Sure, um, yes, Jessra's out with the dreaded stomach bug, so hopefully she keeps it in B V. Yes, um, anyway, um, so this is the, uh, we are too, let's see, there's, uh, we have had issues with our audit being timely, uh, in completeness over the past two fiscal years. We are still late on this year's audit, and it should be done by the end of this week. Um, part of that is county work, um, part of that is our, to be fair, um, part of our auditing, um, company, but when the county is delayed in getting data to the auditor, it delays everything else because they have a, a book of business that's a year long, based on fiscal years. Anyway, uh, we are too late, um, I believe this should be for twenty twenty-four engagement letter, or twenty-three?
It should be, yeah, sorry.
Well, it's for twenty-two to twenty.
For twenty twenty-three audit, as well.
Yes, okay, yes, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, uh, we are too late, um, to, um, procure another auditing firm. However, um, you know, Henkel and Company can complete our twenty twenty-three audit, um, you know, and has done, is wrapping up twenty twenty-two's currently, and has done twenty twenty-one's. Um, and then in twenty twenty-four, um, we will, um, more than likely put out an RFP for a new auditing firm.
Okay.
But lots of backstory there. But anyway, um, it is recommended that we move forward with this because everybody else's, the else cards are filled up for twenty-three.
Okay, and I'll just say their engagement letter is almost identical to last year's, and it is a win for, on some level, in that we got their engagement letter in February of last year, so we're baby steps advancing. Um, and the only, uh, major difference is just a, uh, somewhat slight increase in their fees with your charge for this year.
Sure, sure. Yep. All right, great, any questions on the engagement?
No.
All right.
I will make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three audit engagement letter from Henkel and Company.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And item thirteen, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five, our twenty twenty-four County Board and Position Appointments. Tim, do you wanna lead the, I mean, this is our, this is our annual resolution going through, um, all of our Boyd Board representation. Um, we have, in recent years, added acknowledgement for, um, county-wide responsibilities in such things as, um, continuation of operations. Continuation of operation planning. And such. I think for this year, maybe we have the addition of. The Forest Health Council. Any other big changes? To note?
No, not from my perspective. I know we had last night in Planning Commission, the Planning Commission had made recommendations to the BOCC for new Planning Commission members, which. You could do now. You could appoint those folks to the Planning Commission now. I don't, I don't know if you have a preference or if you guys have a preference either, if you've reviewed the applications. For Planning Commission members and the new alternate.
Yep.
But.
Yeah, I I was in attendance last night and Anne is here also. There were five. Were the five letters of interest for the four vacancies, three regular voting members and one alternate. The two remaining planning commissioners didn't have a strong consensus over giving us a super strong recommendation. One of them did. Offer appointment of three of the letters of interest, which would have been David Clark-Berrell. Steve Stevens and the. Reappointment of Joey Edwards to continue serving as well. And then the alternate of Jason Marv.
And the only other thing that I would add is that. One of the regular minimum appointment as far as terms is the replacement of Abby Dahman. And so one would have an expiration at the end of twenty twenty-five. So we, I think we did provide you those terms. For the Planning Commission for each of those members.
Okay.
So it, or I got it if you need those terms.
That's great. Yeah.
That we probably stagger them.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you. I don't, let's see. I would suggest that we. Appoint. Those folks as. Lightly advised for the Planning Commission. To each of those boards. And then I guess the only other. Decision is just who who sits in that vacancy of the resignation.
Right. Yeah, and and there is a benefit in going ahead and doing the appointments today because we have a double training set for January twenty-second. So it'd be really great to have the board set so that we can make sure that we get all of those members in that training.
And otherwise, the terms are three years, is that?
Right, right. So only the one vacancy for a regular member, the other would be serving three terms expiring in twelve twenty-six. So the other two regular members and the alternate would have terms expiring in twelve twenty-six.
Okay.
So if you want to, we can go through. These quickly, then once we get to the boards, we can see that because each department has updated theirs. Commissioner Fiedler has won the thumb award to be chair in twenty twenty-four. I think if he still.
Yes.
Such an honor.
I do.
Commissioner Mudge being vice chair. The elected clerk and recorder sits as ex officio to clerk of. To the Board of County Commissioners. Christina Floyd.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right. Chris Floyd has our county attorney. Special County Attorney for Human Services, reappointing Allison Casillas. County Auditor that you just approved, Tinkle and Company P C, Budget Officer fulfilled by the County Manager.
Sorry. Apologies, Tim. Go ahead.
Oh, you're fine. Department of Revenue, M O U appointee for sales tax, be our Finance Director. County newspaper is the Herald Democrat, our designated posting place for public notices. Agendas, planners, all of that stuff is Lake County Government website. Claire, I was the Director of Emergency Services, serving as our coordinator. Of the Lake County Disaster Agency and then myself in the absence of the Emergency Manager. Management of County Departments, also falls to the County Manager. Department of Human Services, Child Protection and Adult Protection Teams, Commissioner Marcelo. Do you still want to do those? Okay.
I I I think I did put a note to double check with Janine to make sure that that hasn't fallen under I O G.
Okay.
So we would list the I O G group as?
I think so because we've we've not done CPT or. Adult Protection just because of. Well, like when COVID happened and then everything went to Zoom and then there were concerns around confidentiality of discussing cases in case management. And so I think it has become a subset of the I O G platform. So just double check with Janine.
I did ask Janine about this and and there was another mention of DHS that was a retiring committee. So I remember retiring when she said this is accurate.
Okay, that's perfect. We can leave that there.
And then Commissioner and County Representatives to our various organization and boards, to the Ski Cooper Board. Is all commissioners to make it when they can. Same with Mount Massive Golf Course. There's a golf. I T P R or the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region for C dot is still Commissioner Fiedler. E D C, Commissioner Marcela, Unity Fund, Commissioner Marcela. Community Partnership Panel with Climax, Commissioner Fiedler, Emergency Services Council, all commissioners. Lake County Open Space Initiative, all commissioners. C four, Commissioner Fiedler, Search and Rescue, Sheriff Speckman. Our Regional Council on Governments, Commissioner Mudge. Upper Ark Headwaters Association, Commissioner Mudge. The Leadville Urban Renewal Authority, Commissioner Marcela, CSU Extension, Commissioner Fiedler, Housing, all commissioners.
What does that mean?
Housing?
Like they're not.
The R A J?
When the R A J is the, because it makes you have appointees, like what?
Maybe we take that off.
Are you housing coalition? But that's not really.
It was on there last year. I don't know what it.
We can take it out.
Yeah, let's take it out. Yeah. Starting to catch that before.
Yeah.
Housing Authority, Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Fiedler and Forest Health Council, Commissioner Mudge. Would the commissioners like to make? Any changes to those? Represented, representation of the county on those organizations?
I don't think so.
Okay. Fire Protection Board.
Actually, I do have a quick question. Sorry. I I do represent. As as a community stakeholder to the School District Accountability. And the School District Finance Committee. I don't know if that's appropriate or not to set to put up there, but. My role is community stakeholder.
Okay.
Or or governmental partner. I don't know if you want to put that there, but for whatever that's worth.
Is it, is it stating that that he's a community stakeholder, so it's not typical for a commissioner or?
I don't think so.
To be assigned to that.
I don't think so. So it's up to you, up to you guys. I don't know if you want to or not, but.
But I think you do, you kind of have that dual representation, right? When you're on the, especially on the Finance and Budget Committee.
Yeah, I would think so.
I feel like if you're not speaking for the county, we shouldn't list it.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. That's why I asked in terms of if it's a designated county representative or any of that, or if it's community, kind of like, right here.
Yeah, DAC, you'd be listed under the school districts. I don't know if they list all of them.
No, I'm I'm not listed as a current representative, as a community representative.
Oh.
Or community partner representative.
Oh.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, I am. I will defer to the attorney.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Typically, these are where there's a designated commissioner or county representative already. And so I don't know enough about the school. Board of Education.
You can leave it off for now, but I'll just find out if, like if my, if I roll, my term ends and I roll off, would it, would the replacement come from? Here or somewhere else?
Right.
I can ask that.
Yeah.
I feel like the Finance Committee, I don't know how, what the longevity of that is. But the District Accountability Committee, did they always have a?
Yeah, statutorily, they have to have. So the.
But it wasn't always a county member.
I don't.
Or a county representative?
So I think we're still trying to get our feet underneath us because. It's a statutory requirement of the school district that has been defunct for. Four years. And so they're trying to find their footing of like. What does this look like in perpetuity? So it could be. But I don't, I don't know what that's.
Just. Well, maybe a bit to note.
Yeah, but I can find out and then we can add it if we need to for next year's.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I think that makes sense. And then as the DAC gets its feet under it, I mean, I would. I would suggest advocating for a county role there since it impacts our operations immensely.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Wish I.
And then maybe that like. State wider, regional recreation council that may be added to this too, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't include it here now.
Yeah, that's a good point. Do you have a list of those things that maybe we would add subsequently, like? Okay, thank you. So it'd be that regional piece and the school district. Advisory committees. And now I think that's it.
For fire protection, as we work through amending the I G A with the City of Leadville, the Planning Board. Is currently not active. However, the Management Board still is. Currently, you know, for twenty twenty-three, Commissioner Fiedler has representative, represented the county along with myself. At least I don't represent, I was there. I go too.
I go too.
And is that still fine, Commissioner Fiedler?
Yeah.
Okay. The fire warden via a delegation by the Sheriff of Lake County is that those warden duties in statute are delegated to Chief Daley. Board of Adjustment, we have updated, or except. Or Amy Tate?
Amy Tate and Larry Markham still aren't fulfilling their terms. So Kayla and Tim are new appointments. Tim Berry is a pretty exciting new addition to our Board of Adjustment. He served as the County Attorney for quite some time and then just retired as the Breckenridge County Attorney. So we're really excited about Tim's interest in serving on the Board of Adjustment.
Cool.
Great. And of course, we're very excited to have Kayla's renewed interest in serving. On the Board of Adjustment as well.
And for the Public Library, the Board of Trustees, one. Trustee has just retired and rolled off. So they are doing interviews there, but this, these are the current trustees and their terms. Weed control.
Should we put in like a fifth vacant slot?
Yeah, maybe.
Weed control.
We.
Harmony is at the Forest Council now.
We have, well, Harmony is with, she is with Central Colorado Conservancy, being manager of Lake County Conservation District. And helping to facilitate the Forest Health Council meetings.
Okay.
Our weed control agreement, I am, I did reach out to Kayla Malone to ask if we had executed that and I do not think that. Process took place between Chiefy and Lake. We have a I G A that needed. Renewal.
Yeah.
Renewed. And so I think we will do that. And typically, the. A Lake County Conservation District representative had been appointed to that board.
Weed control board?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know my first year here, we did. Update the weed control I G A. Since then, we have not done anything.
Right.
Because I think it's a ten thousand dollar contribution that Lake County makes.
Maybe thirteen, five?
Yeah, I think you're right.
But yeah, I am, I think we had done the I G A and it got punted over to the Chiefy Board of Commissioners. I'm not sure.
Oh.
It was ever fully executed. So we can look that up, but if we have an objection to. Having Harmony serve in that role, we can bring that up to the Conservation District or Adam, if you have other thoughts there. No? Okay. I don't have that concern.
Neither.
Okay.
Just for clarification, we're talking about Noxious Weeds, huh? Marijuana.
Noxious Weeds. Noxious, you can put that in there, Noxious Weeds. X I O U S.
I think it's. There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
E nine one one. These are all the members that the B O C C has appointed. Sheriff Speckman, Chief Daley, Director Grantham, Director Skeen and Chief Brier, who is the. Interim.
I would recommend, yeah. And I don't know if you want to put that as interim or if you want to, interim chief Brier. Because I I do understand he's not planning on.
Right. You can't spell interim either.
Sorry.
It's fine.
Oh.
Oh, man.
Passing.
Fire code adoption in the Revision Commission, so Chief Daley, all of the commissioners and then Director Schneider.
So that needs to, the resolution is, I believe it's twenty-two thirteen and I can get a new adoption date because the fire code was adopted. It was a very old adoption of the fire code. So I'll get the most recent, but I think it's twenty-three thirteen and then I can get the date of adoption. So I can get that to. Does Sarah? Or whoever. But I can, when I get downstairs, I can. Favor before the end of the meeting, I can, I can shoot that back up. I can text that back up.
Okay.
Tourism panel, which are appointed by the B O C C. You've made some various appointments over this past year. I believe we have not fulfilled Gabby or Elsa's, right, Sarah?
They go through the end of next year.
Oh, twenty fourteen.
This year, yeah. Well, yes, sorry, this year. So they go through December. So.
Anyway, these are.
So this is.
Steely and Elsa. I don't remember what's in your last name, the other Elsa were just appointed.
Okay.
By you all last time.
Okay. I don't know why, I thought we're still in twenty-three. We're not. Board of Review. So Anne and her team have worked to keep that going. I think you have one new one this year, Charlie?
So no, Charlie is with a previous member who gave us a letter of interest. So he is. Going to serve a new term. Based on this appointment. And then Matt Bolick had been an alternate who has now stepped up into regular membership. So we have. Our alternate position still vacant. So we're still seeking an alternate on that. But that's all correct. Unfortunately, our terms aren't as staggered on that. So we're gonna have a lot of, we'll get on top of this for the end of the year so that we can make sure we don't have a big vacancy on our.
Yeah, is that correct though?
That actually is. Just, I think.
Do we want to just change that?
Yeah.
Because if they, you know, I think that just, you could.
Do you do it at twenty twenty-five?
You could.
What might be your suggestion? Or would you like to change it later?
Yeah, I would love to have a conversation.
Okay.
You know, I think that Luke has served as the Chair. For several years. I think that he would be interested in in serving out his, you know, like an extra year to to do that to twenty-five. You know, just as I'm looking at these, Ethan Kirk again has went downstream. He's been a very active member. So. It might be easy enough to make those both twenty twenty-five. Just to kind of stagger that.
Okay.
I think that they would all be interested in that.
Okay, we can do.
Yeah, they actually, I think it would be just fun to. So then we have a better. Because by our. Because by our bylaws, they have to serve, they serve three years' terms, so this would just be a slight extension to that three.
But that will help a lot with-
Yeah.
And then, does all commissioners need to be? Do we need to be assigned to that? Where it does all commissioners as, as if we are-
You know, you don't hear-
Yeah, we don't hear those.
You don't hear, you, you, they're recommending body for you, so, you know, they, you know, we're doing an adoption, um, well, you know, but they're, they're just kind of your recommending body.
That, that's just a standard thing with all leagues, it seems to mention like which commissioners-
That we can all participate maybe?
I think if it says all commissioners, it means that there's not one of you that's assigned, it's like all of you kind of oversee this team and the recommendations.
Okay, I'm, I guess I'm just asking, I don't think we've done that. Right?
The only, the only recommendation that you've ever had from your Board of Review is to the adoption.
I don't think that would be seen.
Uh, so I guess it could stay, because, you know, you do receive a recommendation, we are recommending body to the board.
Exactly.
But typically, um, you don't really participate in any of the else.
Pressure.
Yeah, uh,
Same with the-
Appeals are here right by the Board of Adjustment, so, um, they're not.
Uh, airport advisory board. Board of Health and the Medical Officer. Planning Commission.
Here we go.
Um-
I just said, I sent it to, I don't know, I sent it to Tim, but I sent it to somebody else, the list, I already typed it up. For some reason, my, if you want to take my engagement, it's in.
Oh, so just copy and paste?
Yeah, so I sent it to your teams or email. You're halfway there.
I'm halfway there.
Well, it has terms too.
Oh, no, I don't think they've decided on, but, okay.
But we can-
You can do whatever.
Do you, you want to do the appointment today from the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
I would be happy, I, yeah, I would be happy to do that and comfortable to do that, um, but I-
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, is, is that, how do you spell it?
It is J-S-O-N.
And how, do you spell the last name? And then, so which one of these three would we, um, Anne, do you have a suggestion of which one of either Dave, Steve, or Joey to assign to Abby's vacancy?
I don't have any suggestion whatsoever. Um, I think just whatever, um, you know, Joey is a returning member.
Yeah, Joey should probably be a new full term.
New full term.
Um, Steve and, um, David are our two new members. Um, so I think that you could choose whichever, um, one of them, um, would be basically fulfilling the commitment of, um, Abby Domon.
Through this year. Any suggestions?
If you can do David, I don't have that.
Through 24?
25.
25.
And then Jason would also, as an alternate, he would also be a 2026.
Okay. Okay. And then you'll, you'll let them know about their appointment and their training date?
Yeah, yeah, we're sending our email to them today.
Okay.
Um, about their first, um, commitment from the 22nd, and just so the board knows too, so we have a dual training on the 22nd.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Excellent.
Minister of Trail Committee, uh, Commissioner Mudge has been working with our trits on this.
These are accurate.
These are accurate. Do they have terms?
No.
Okay.
What's that?
Ever and never.
Perpetuity.
As long as they're on. Recreation Advisory Board.
So we can add Wendy, right?
Yes.
And then you still have two vacancies, Adam?
We do, yeah.
Do you have term limits on yours?
Uh, I think that's been revisited and, uh, upstairs, but.
And let me look at Wendy's last name. W-Y-S-K-I-E, okay.
Sorry, I didn't catch this, but I, I had stopped going, cause I thought this had kind of transitioned into like a board really supporting staff, and that you, that we didn't need or didn't want? B O C C rep on it, but what do, what do you think?
Didn't want a, a what, a, oh, B O C C, I see what you're saying. Yeah, it was my understanding as well that you were-
Stepping back?
Yeah. B O C C was gonna step back, and it was advisory board, not just for recreation, but as pros-
Yeah.
evolves, and I think that's, there's an opportunity there for that, but, um, I didn't see a need for a B O C C representation at those meetings.
Wow, that timing, oh, man.
He's keeping.
That's why I got so much, that's why I got so much done in 2023. Isn't, is Kira on your row?
Yeah, she is on.
Oh, okay.
So.
Um, all right.
So, there we are.
The Watershed Advisory Council is not currently active.
Hasn't been for a while. I don't know if we take it off or just leave it. I don't know if it matters, though.
I know we discussed last year on it, and, cause I think there's one other that's on here somewhere that's not currently active of-
Planning Board?
Yeah, um, uh, one, a reminder to future boards that they could resurrect it, or two, that like, it is something that we do have, so we don't have to fully recreate it, we can dust it off. It was kind of, it was the conversation I recall from last year.
That's fine.
Up to you guys on-
That's fine.
Okay.
We can just leave it.
Uh, the Arkansas Basin Roundtable, Commissioner Mudge, and then Greg Teeter. Public Health Director and Medical Officer, uh, Dr. Zwirlinger. Uh, Building and Zoning Official is Director Schneider. Conflict Resolution Panel, um, which is for staff, right, county employees, um, would go through, or is made up of, um, the B O C C Chair, so Commissioner Fiedler, our HR Director, and myself as the county manager. Our coop, um, uh, Claire is determined to make sure that everyone reviews their coop this year, um, and makes updates to it. Uh, so part of the proposal that, you know, that we'll have at CLT is that for any folks, you know, to be eligible for their merit-based increase, will need to have done their coop.
For their department?
Yes.
For any proposals through, in their department?
Yep, and that, um, so yeah, so, um, from there, you know, starting this year, we'll kind of flood an incentive characteristic, however you want to see it, um, for folks to update and review their coop, and then work with their staff on actually understanding what it is.
Great.
Um, also stating that if commissioners are unable to attend meetings of the boards they are designated to above, they may send a fellow commissioner or county manager as their proxy. Regular meetings of the Board of County Commissioners will be held at 11:00 AM on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, or at the call of the chair. Evening meetings can be held upon request, work sessions will be scheduled as necessary. I think we've, it's a great debate on posting on the courthouse's front atrium, when the, uh,
So-
Public posting.
Yeah, so clarity, uh, the primary posting is on the county's website. At the B O C C's discretion, you can also designate posting at another location, which traditionally has been the front door of the, the, um, courthouse. Because it's discretionary, I think all you would have to do is post the notice of the meeting. You don't have to post, but it does say in terms of what's posted, the, the primary posting has to, um, include specific agenda information available, so, but there, because the other, the ancillary posting is at your discretion, that's not an express requirement.
Simply as with discretion, physical posting, or what?
Yeah. Notice of, and it is primarily focused on the notice of the meetings, so other information as to what's in the meetings, um, or physical postings would be at your discretion. And that's why I, I think the way it reads, public place of posting notice of meetings, the way it reads is appropriate.
So do you- Okay.
So to me, that reads, though, that we have to post every meeting on the-
Yeah, that, well, and that's the way it is, so it's, it's discretionary as to whether the commissioners want to establish that will also be posted again, so you either do what you done. I, I would not recommend that you do it sometimes and not sometimes and stuff, I think for consistency, you need to, and, and based on-
But does that apply to all of our commissions?
Well, and that's, that's what I said, that the way a local public body is de- defined includes all of these other little, you know, local, local public bodies defined as any board, committee, commission, authority, or other advisory, policymaking, rulemaking, or formally constituted body of any political subdivision of the state.
So can we say, I think Sir, um, Commissioner Mudge's suggestion was to add and when possible, physical posting, which just gives a little leeway to allow us to train up all of the staffs that work with those commissions, because they're not currently doing that. So this is a new, this would be a new.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
And so adding and when possible, physical posting.
So, I mean, I think that's fine if that's what y'all want to do.
Would.
Okay, no, I'd go before with. And with, before with, and when possible. Even though, uh, maybe you want to do feasible instead of possible, just cause that's, I mean, it's possible.
Yeah.
It's very true. Trent will tell you that.
Um, I just, I don't want to re, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but that, uh, should we rephrase that, the public place of posting notice of meetings of the Lake County Commissioners and the Lake County Associated?
Well, I, the worst, I think it reads, Lake County Public Bodies is that, because the definition under the code is so inclusive of all the different, so it's supposed to be-
But that's what we are, we are participating in.
But you know, you're designating, it, it's y'all's, y'all's obligation to designate the official posting place for local public bodies. So that's what you're doing in, in here.
Don't, no.
I just mean, as you're saying.
It's, uh, you know, you-
I don't, yeah, I don't know, I mean, the definition of local public, like, all local public bodies have to abide by open meeting law, and they need to post and designate. I do not think that the open meeting law is telling, giving authority to Lake County Comi- or County Commissioners to-
Okay, so the, the, all meetings of a former three or more members of any local public body, whichever is fewer, at which any public business is discussed, or at which any formal action may be taken or declared to be public meetings, open to the public adoption. So that's why I'm saying this, it's not, this is, this resolution isn't just applicable to y'all in terms of y'all designating the, the place for public posting. And the code definitely encourages that the postings be done on the website, but at your discretion, you can also designate another-
Additional locations.
And it says, the public place, 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 and such, should be designated annually at the local public bodies' first regular meeting for each calendar year.
So we would be instructing, if, if this goes into effect with this, we would be instructing staff who work with county statutory boards to post their meetings on the front door as well.
Well, when feasible.
When feasible.
Cause currently, right, if you think of it, of Board of Review.
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment, Figu, Planning Commission, right, those are all posted on our website.
Tourism.
Tourism, housing, well-
Fire, planning, fire management.
Right, those are all posted on our website.
Everything we attend should be posted and noticed in our planner.
On the, yeah, on the website, yeah.
Everything, yeah, all of those are, but they're not currently posted on the door, so that's the-
Right.
That's what we're, I think, trying to define here, is that that's the instruction now.
I guess if, yes, for, for the county commissioners, for you three, will the, the weekly planner-
Agendas.
And the agendas suffice to be posted on the front door.
The weekly planner and our meeting agendas.
And your meeting agendas.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a good effort if we can get all the other agendas, if they are creative and available and sent out, um, posted, so.
On the front door.
On the front door, if, if possible. Um, if feasible.
And I would just say, the, the way this reads, you're essentially applying this to everybody, because you say, with the exception, you're not accepting anybody that put the public library board. So that's why this is intended to be all encompassing of the local public bodies, it's not just intended to be for y'all, by the way it's drafted here.
So we, is that the intention of statute? Or is, are you saying that's the way that we have drafted this? We are giving, we are-
We are accepting, you are accepting the public library book, but I think that's based on the public library, the, the Library Act type thing. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily, and y'all can go down this rabbit hole all you want, I'm just trying to avoid the issue where somebody-
I don't really want to go down that rabbit hole.
Complaints this year about people not finding things, not being able to find postings of stuff, and so I'd like us to try to avoid that.
Yeah, I mean, no, we want to, we want everybody, I mean, but I don't, there is nothing that I have read in the statute that says county commissioners have the authority to designate posting places. Open meetings law, like, I don't think that is what we are doing. We are designating our meetings and meetings that we participate in as appropriate and as we've assigned as representatives, because we, because we fall under that requirement, put open meetings law.
Okay, if that's the interpretation you want to take, then my suggestion is you remove the reference to public bodies, and you take out the last phrase with the exception, because if you're going to take the position that you're only doing this as to the county commissioners, you don't want to reference anybody else, because then somebody's gonna say, well, they didn't comply with what the, the commissioners designated as the public place. And so, but then what you're also, I think you also then need to tell all of these other entities that they need to designate, and that to the extent possible, it has to be done on the website, because that's essentially what, what the code said.
I, I, I-
And that's my concern is that we're getting a bunch of agencies-
I would agree with that, because then that, those ancillary entities or public bodies, like the RecAdvisory and all of those things, they will need to have bylaws that appropriately designate their place of posting.
Okay, are you-
This designates that place of posting.
Yes, no, I agree.
Yeah, so that, all I'm saying is if you just want this to apply-
But that's for our, like, county, I, sorry, in my head, I'm thinking, like, the hospital district and the hospital board. Are you saying that we are designated there?
There's separate legal entities there. No, I'm talking about all the, the, the ancillary boards and stuff that y'all have talked about in this resolution.
Yes.
That y'all have made appointments to and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, I thought, I, I apologize, I thought you were going beyond that.
So, so maybe-
That's where I was getting kinda-
Do you clarify that in there as to your point to say, Lake County Government Public Bodies? Add government after Lake County?
There, you were there.
Because then that designates it to like just our organization.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And then you got the when feasible in here to-
Yeah.
Great.
Wonderful.
I wonder, sorry, we've beaten this-
All right, let's, let's, we, since we're here, let's do it.
I think it should be designated as the county website.
Yes.
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 Oh, that was easy, Jeff.
What else you got?
Okay, that's good. Now that's, that's better clarification than there.
And then Anne just texted me the other one.
Awesome, okay.
And you got Hinkle in there?
Yes.
Yes. So here's the second.
Excellent.
Much better.
All right.
Great. I understand the motion to the adoption of Resolution 2405.
So moved.
Second.
And you support the discussion?
No.
Very good. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Um, and last, on our new business items, item number fourteen, discussion and consideration of the ratification of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Jason Heckert, and this will be led by our County Attorney, Chris Wood.
Yes, thank you very much, um, just for uh brief context on this, um, as y'all know, there was a claim filed uh last year in relation to an injury allegedly sustained by a participant using the Dutch Henry to being healed. Um, and uh in review of that, it was submitted to the county's insurance underwriters and such for review, CTSI. Reviewing that, they assigned Defense Counsel who recommended that the matter be resolved with Doctor Heckert prior to engaging in litigation. Um, the reasons for that being that there might be some difficulty in the county proving that there was notice of an alleged lane closure on Dutch Henry that uh the the claimant suggested precipitated it as injury, and that the cost of going forward in litigation of this matter will far exceed um the benefit of settling it in advance. So this was a pre-settlement um agreement that was negotiated by CTSI's attorney um and approved by CTSI. The consideration to be paid, um, that has been paid under it, um, is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. There was no contribution required by the county for this. Um, as a result of this though, we've had, um, we had a substantial meeting with Dana Foley of CTSI to talk about how the county can look at further mitigating its risk of liability in these circumstances going forward, especially with the number of our open recreation facilities and areas um that would be very difficult to close or to properly manage who's committing one and such on it. So we're looking at that, we'll more than likely be coming back with improvements to the signage as well as waivers, looking at potentially for facilities like Dutch Henry, the skate park, you know, um, and the areas that are open that aren't.
Middle Belt Trail.
That are all open to the public and very difficult to staff sufficiently to to watch for everything, to perhaps have some signage that would have QR codes that link to electronic waivers and stuff like that. But we're gonna be looking at that, I'm sure we'll probably come back with y'all recommendations as to some changes to recreation policies and procedures and stuff to cover that. But at this point in time, um, because it didn't involve the county, the county uh was a party to the settlement agreement and the timing of such required that the county sign off on it, so we asked today for the BOCC to ratify that settlement agreement.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any other comments on the board? None for me.
None for me.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to ratify uh the agreement between the Lake County Board of Commissioners and Jason Heckert.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent. There you go, team, and we have the consent agenda, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cool, thanks, and at twelve thirty-five, we will adjourn.
And who's still online?
Uh, Staff, Bryce and Michael.
This is exactly why I wanted that last item on the last item. We wore everybody else out and they left.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.